Tom, I just left Bradley at the Y.
Ah, okay. How's he doing?
He was standing out of trouble. He thought he was going to be late. I go, no, I'll be all right.
Brent said that we all get kicked out of the meeting. I don't know if you saw that.
We all got kicked out?
Brent asked if we all got kicked out.
We're all here.
I know, but Brad must have thought everybody got kicked out. Kim, Kim answered him. And just to, yeah.
We are live, Tony.
We're good? Okay, should we just go and then see what happens with him or what?
I'll reach out to him right now.
Tony, you're kind of hard to hear.
Me?
Uh huh.
I'm all the way up, so I don't know. Is that better?
It's a little better.
I got full bars. I got everything else. I never usually have a problem, but.
Yeah, you are. You maybe, maybe it's my volume. You sound kind of soft.
I can talk louder, but I'm.
No, that is a little better. Maybe you're away from the mic.
All right, well, how goes close?
That was weird. Everybody froze, disconnected.
Maybe there's, is that better? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we'll get started. I'll call this work session of the Jamestown City Council of December 21st order with the clerk. Please call the roll.
Or Councilmember Sheldon?
Here.
James?
Here.
Caruba?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Eckland?
Here.
Graham Reinhardt?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
And President Dulce?
Here. At this time, I'd ask the clerk, are there any comments from the public, any correspondence?
Not this evening, no.
Not this evening, okay. Then we will move on right to all committee reports and we'll start with finance and Chairwoman, Councilwoman Eckland.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have actually five resolutions and one informational report for tonight. First resolution is a resolution authorizing the mayor and Jeffrey Lehman, P E Director of Public Works and Acting Director of Parks Recreation and Conservation, to purchase from Joan Chevrolet, 21505 Route 6, Warren PA 16365, a new 2021 Chevrolet Silverado 3500 with utility body via bid number COJDFS16, bid opening November 30th, 2020, for a total amount not to exceed $40,590 and no cents, subject to the approval of the Corporation Council as to form. This is something that was funded in the DPW capital budget. And Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, this is a 2021 Orion budget or 2020?
I believe it's 2021. Pat, you want to?
It's 2020, Jeff. It's.
Yep, it is a 2020.
And this is replacing a vehicle, correct?
In kind, yes.
Just for clarification.
What is the vehicle it's replacing? It's a 2011.
Anybody else have any questions for Pat or Jeff?
Yeah, what do you mean by in kind, Jeff? What does that mean?
We'll be using it for the, we're replacing the same vehicle, just update, upgrading it. The crew truck.
Hey, anybody else? Okay, second resolution is authorizing the mayor to execute change order number one with our Patty Concrete and Excavating, P O Box 3081, Jamestown, New York, 14701, for concrete work 2020, Bowen Street, Price Street to Newton Avenue, contract for a total decrease of $10,042.52, subject to the approval of Corporation Council as to form. Jeff, do you have anything you want to add on that?
Um, yeah, I mean, you'll see that's a decrease in the total. However, there are some changes that will be increased. Items that we, we moved around when we got into construction. I mean, ultimately, it's a, it's a savings. 10,000 plus.
And that ties into, as Jeff just stated, resolution number three, which is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute change order number one with G L Olson Incorporated, 5529 Thumb Road to Whitville, 14728, for ADA restroom addition at Jackson Taylor Park, for a total increase in the amount of $2,999 and no cents, subject to the approval of Corp, the Corporation Council as to form. Also note that this project will be funded with community block, development block grant ADA improvement funds.
This is the restroom addition at, uh, Jackson Taylor. There was a couple items that weren't in the contract. They got into some tree stumps, concrete that was in the backfill that nobody knew was there. They had to bring in additional fill for that. What else do we have in there? We have issue matching up the, the block to match the existing building. So there's some up cost on that. We took back some items. We're going to do seating in-house. And there was a modification to the construction, a bond beam where we got a small credit, $630. And that project is still underway. They, they're putting block up as we speak.
Anybody have any questions?
Should that be ready for spring, Jeff?
Uh, weather permitting, yeah, we're hoping.
Good.
Well, they'll finish up in the spring. We're moving, we're still working on it.
They're moving right along down there.
Yeah, they are. We, we had a week off due to COVID, the cruise, but we're good.
Okay, resolution number four. We have a resolution authorizing the mayor to submit the 2020 to 2024 consolidated plan and the draft fiscal year 2020 annual action plan, including the specific CDBG and home activities contained therein to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Please note that the public hearing for the CDBG annual action plan will be held on Wednesday, December 23rd at 6:00 PM via Zoom. Crystal, do you have anything you want to add regarding this, regarding your email this afternoon?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Um, we were notified late in the day Friday that there's an additional document that HUD is requiring us to update, which is supplemental to the Consolidated Action Plan. It's a citizen participation plan, which is updated periodically. The last time it was updated was 2014 and HUD has changed some requirements since then. So they are asking us to update that. Unfortunately, that means we will not be submitting the consolidated plan or the annual action plan until the end of January, as HUD will not allow us to submit that ahead of the updated citizen participation plan. With that citizen participation plan, that requires an additional 30-day public comment period. So we will still hold the, um, public hearing on Wednesday, the 23rd at 6:00 PM with regard to the, the consolidated plan and the annual action plan. It can't hurt us to, to do an extra public hearing. We'll do a final public hearing in January once the citizen participation plan, public comment period has ended. So if there's any questions, let me know.
Was that published, Crystal? Was it published in the newspaper to let people know about it?
Oh, about them, yes, about the public hearing, yes, it was. It was also, it's also on the website and we shared it via social media.
Okay, will they be able to submit comments live or will they have to submit them ahead? Okay.
They'll be able to submit live.
Okay.
It's a Zoom call.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Can you send out an invitation for that?
I sure will.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Next resolution is a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign any documents related to the submission of the 2021 New York Main Street Grant and further authorizing the mayor to execute all necessary documents with the New York Department of State should the city of Jamestown be successful in securing funding through the CFA submission process. Crystal, you want to address this one as well?
Sure. Um, the Department of Housing, Housing and Community Renewal opened up a grant for the New York Main Streets. It's a grant opportunity that's typically available through the CFA process. Because this, the normal CFA process didn't happen this past year. This is sort of a, a special round, if you will. And we are targeting the Second Street Corridor, East Second Street. We're looking at, uh, the boundaries from, uh, industry to, um, North Main Street, Second Street and First Street. So it encompasses that entire area. If there's any specific questions about what we're looking at, it's a, a Main Street grant. What, the one that we're looking at is a target area grant, so it will be a maximum of $500,000. And, um, there's opportunity to invest in, uh, buildings throughout that corridor, which we would identify, work with building owners, to identify, you know, rehab projects and, um, projects that would contribute to, to that corridor.
Crystal, when would you know, um, when you would receive the funding?
Oh, gosh. Um, well, it's due January 15th. Um, if you give me a minute, I'll look up the day that we, we would find out. Um, I don't anticipate it will be until, certainly going to be after the first of the year, probably, well, it's not due till January 15th, so I'll let you know, Vicky. I have to look it up.
Okay.
Crystal, when you say industrial to North Main, what, what exactly are you referring to, to industrial?
So in the industry street, the.
Okay.
Alley there, right by the high school.
Institute?
Or institute, I'm sorry. Doing too many things at once, institute.
Yeah, you had me fooled. I thought I knew all the streets in the city.
I'm just making them up as I go.
So this is a grant from Main Street, but it's institute?
It's, it's, we're focusing on Second Street from Institute to North Main. We're also looking at First Street, some opportunities along First Street. But the, the name of the grant program is New York Main Streets. So that's just a general term for, you know, your main downtown central business district streets.
Okay. I'm curious, um, as to one, because when you said Main Street, I was looking at, I was thinking of actual Main Street, like, you look at Love School toward Route 60, that street, that part of the street. We have some work that was being done, but we have some, some houses that, you know, I just was wondering, because that's, when people come to Jamestown, you're coming down North Main Street. And so, um, that was, that'd be my next question is, when you say Main Streets, that kind of.
Sure.
Clears it up.
So this grant in particular is targeted at, um, downtown sort of business and building anchors in your downtown central business district. When the area that you're referring to, Tmoo, is, is really outside of the downtown core. We do have another initiative that we've been working with the J R C on called Unite North Main. We also have identified that corridor as a gateway. Um, and we focused a, a good amount of our home projects and CDBG funding along that corridor as well.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Anybody else? Okay, the last thing informational report that we have is a discussion regarding the over/under budget resolution that will be presented December 28th, 2020 voting session. Ryan, I know you want to address this, but I also will note for the record that this is up and changing up until the actual vote that day with the over and under as close as we can get to the end of the year, so, just keep that in perspective when he gives this information.
Yeah, I mean, I wasn't actually, I wasn't planning on sharing any specific details tonight. I'll have all of, you know, every single over/under on the resolution next week. Um, so I don't really have any other information to share. I guess for maybe some of the new council members, just this, this is an annual adjustment, um, resolution that, that comes in every year and basically we're just moving, making an adjustment to the budget to account for some of the departments that would be over budget and pulling from departments that would be under budget. Anyone has any other questions for me here?
Tony, we can't hear you.
I said you'll have the full report next week?
Yes.
Okay, will we have it before the vote?
Yeah, I've already sent it to, to you and, um, Kim and Marie. Yeah, it'll, it'll go out with the agenda on Thursday, yeah.
Any other changes, sorry?
On Wednesday, actually, yes, yeah.
Okay, anybody have any other further questions? For finance, and that's it from us.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to public safety and Councilman Sheldon.
Thanks, Mr. President. Have a resolution authorizing the Board of Public Utilities install one 150 watt LED equivalent fixture on pole number 18920 on Euclid Avenue. This was per the request of the Council President. Tony, is this between Prendergast and Lakeview or Lakeview and Sturgis?
Lakeview. And Sturgis, so it's towards the bottom, almost to, to Sturgis. There was a request by, uh, a few of the neighbors because of some ongoing issues with car break-ins and some other issues in that area. And there is a, a quite a dead spot in there, a dark spot at the bottom as you come down the hill. So this'll help that out.
And then we have our resolution to, uh, have the regular meetings of City Council of the City of Jamestown. Hopefully will be held in the City Council chambers here starting in 2021, but, um, probably not the first three or four months. Beginning the evening of January 25th, 2021 and unscheduled Monday evenings thereafter in the year 2021. At the same time and place. I think it's usually the last Monday of the month.
Um, Jen, can you also email everyone the work session dates too?
Yeah, I'll get, I'll get those out to everyone tomorrow.
Thank you.
Standard resolution there. Also, we have some Bell Jar licenses or games of chance here in Jamestown. The Jamestown Lodge number 263 BPO Elks, Chicago Area, number 2145, Fraternal Order of Eagles Incorporated, Jamestown Vietnam Veterans and the Irelou Spring Veteran Club Incorporated. Vote on that or move on that Monday. This will just run on that Monday, okay? All right, uh, the last resolution, um, the result in City, the Council hereby retains WCA Services Corporation, EBA All-Star EMS located at 29 Maple Street, Jamestown, New York, 14701, as authorized billing agent for the Jamestown Fire Department and City of Jamestown in accordance with Section 4 of the ambulance agreement authorized on the resolution 20201A12. And be it further resolved that the mayor and the deputy fire chief be authorized to execute any applications, forms or agreements on behalf of the city for the sole purpose of establishing provider numbers, billing accounts or billing services through federal, state or local agencies. Deputy Chief, do you want to add anything to this?
So as we've discussed in the past, the city has historically built for ambulance transports. There's a provision in our agreement with All-Star for them to be our authorized billing agent. If you guys so choose to execute that option, um, there's also an attached fee schedule, which will present itself a little bit farther down in the agenda, but, um, there is some paperwork that needs to be done in order for us to file for provider numbers and things of that nature, and All-Star is willing to help us out with that.
Any questions on that? And the next is the ordinance amending Chapter 15-3D of the Jamestown City Code relative to fire department fees. That's exactly what the deputy chief was talking about. So we have a whole slew of different fees for different, uh, actions by the fire department. Any questions on that? Next, there's an ordinance amending Sections 160 and 224 of the Jamestown City Code relative to glass collection and to amend the time of solid waste and recycling placement at the curb. Starting in 2021, the BP will not collect in glass. There really has not been that, with the demand by citizens to recycle glass here. They can still take it to, uh, the transfer station of landfill, which I just heard today that they actually use the glass by crushing it, using it as a liner in the landfill. So it's actually reused, not recycled by the county, but it's put to good use anyway. And they will be also changing the time from 6:00 PM to 4:00 PM for residents to put out the solid waste and recycling containers. On their respective days under their neighborhoods there. Any questions on that? Finally, we have another ordinance regarding the BP amending Section 240-14 of Jamestown City Code relative to unpaid sewer rentals or the sewer use fees, I believe is more common term for that, but if people are not paying their sewer use fees, after two years, it can be put on the taxes of that parcel more to the electric user rates, I believe. Some questions on that?
Oh, these were just the two, uh, discussion items that were held last, last work session when Dave Leathers was here. These were brought up, so they were discussed.
Okay. And finally, um, we have one tour rate card request for DLS A dash or slash TLLC Williams Garage and TCP tow, uh, three different tour rates. They were waiting on some paperwork last week for these. I believe that everything is in order at this point.
Does this have to be voted on tonight? I think, Jen, you put that in there.
Yeah, public, we just need public safety to, to okay the rate cards.
All the three public safety committee members, if you want to.
I, I just, can I say something real quick? Jen, for some information on the, um, tow cards, and these three companies are the only three that aren't based in the city. So just keep that in mind, not saying we need to do anything about it, but just, you know, it was a little longer. You know, there are a few people on there, most of them in the city. These were just a few of them that were not, so maybe something we should look at down the road to maybe give priority or something to, uh, tow companies based in the city.
Grant, I, I think you need to discuss that further with public safety, especially I know they have a, they have a policy that they follow for calling and tow providers and certain tow providers don't have certain equipment able to do calls and all like that. It becomes a major issue when you selectively choose businesses just because they're in the city that way, just as an FYI.
That is, uh, that's correct. Um, there are some times that, uh, like the police department needs a flatbed. Not everyone has a flatbed. And, um, not everyone's always available, um, 24 hours a day. There is a rotating list for tow trucks, so it's done fairly. It's kept at, uh, dispatch up in Mayville and they go through a rotating list, so everyone gets called, uh, on a, on a fair basis.
That's good to know. Thank you.
Is, I need a motion to approve these tour rate cards by Public Safety Committee. So, neighbor?
Aye.
Second, aye.
Second, aye, whatever.
Our rate cards, rate cards have been approved. And that's all I have from, uh, Public Safety at this point.
Uh, Councilman, um, Sheldon, I'd like to, uh, put in a request for a lighting pole on Livingston and Meadows Avenue. It has been reported, and I went up there. It is kind of dark and poor lighting there, and I did have the number, but I left it in my car and I can, um, I can get that to Jen, the, the pole number tomorrow morning.
Okay. Yes, that would be a good gift to Jen. Thank you.
Is that it?
Okay. That's it.
We'll move on to Public Works and Councilman Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, we had a resolution on the purchase of the new Chevrolet Silverado, that you've already heard in, uh, in finance, um, for $40,590. If there's, wanted, no other questions on that? Our second resolution, uh, also in finance was to execute the change order with our Patty Concrete, for the concrete work on Bowen Street.
Just have a question for Jeff on this. Is, is this work all been completed except for maybe the reseeding, which will be done in the spring?
Uh, I believe there's still some punchless items outside of that. There was, I know there was a list generated. I don't know if they've completed it due to the weather. Anything that's not completed will be fixed in the spring. And yeah, the seating and landscaping will be done in the spring.
Okay, and they got a late start on it, but the weather really cooperated with them to give them time, so.
At least we didn't.
I was down there not too long ago. I looked pretty close to done, if not completely done.
Okay, and again, that was for a total decrease of $10,042.52, so no complaints about that. And then the final resolution we had was also on finance, and that's for the, uh, the ADA restrooms addition to Jackson Taylor Park, um, for $2,999. So if there are no other questions on that, that's the only three resolutions we had for Public Works.
Um, we did have a discussion on.
You did?
UPMC.
Yes, yep. Yeah, discussion on to request a mid-block crosswalk on Allen Street near UPMC. Jeff and I talked earlier on this and, um, I think it's probably Public Works and Public Safety, but Jeff, I'll let you, uh, kind of fill in the council on, on that.
Okay, this is a request for a crosswalk on Allen, uh, from the parking lot, the hospital parking lot to their side door, very similar to the one that was put in on, um, Foot Avenue. This is, some of you that have been on the council a while might recall this came to us a while back. It kind of got lost in the details when they realized what they had to do to, to make it work and got to be a little more expensive and it kind of fell off the, uh, off their list, I guess. Um, it's not something, as I told Tom, that I'm recommending. I didn't recommend the first one, um, the one on Foot Avenue, the county wound up recommending, and we followed their lead on that. The state looks at it as a, a bad place to put a crosswalk because of the safety issues.
the safety issues of people feeling like they have the right of way, which they do. Motorists not seeing them, that kind of thing. When you're that close to a controlled intersection, foot nail and that being said, if council wants to put it there, we'll put it there, but I'm recommending no.
How much farther is it to the, from where they want to place it? I, I'm having a hard time reading. How far?
From where they want to put it to the corner is kind of, that's a good question, Marie.
I would say no more than three hundred feet of a block.
Is it mid-block, Jeff, that they're talking about, like between?
Call, that block is a long block.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, but if they, if you were to come out of the parking lot in the morning, you'd have to walk down to Foot Avenue cross, or we just put all the money improvements in controlled intersection there, where we've got crosswalks, we've got motorists, you know, advisement, and then walk back to the hospital. So I get it. I probably wouldn't do the same myself. I, I'd walk across the, the block and the chief would write me up for it probably. I don't.
You know, the thing that concerns me most about this, when we talk about walkable communities, et cetera, and exercise and everything else, it's three hundred feet, so six hundred feet. If people are doing ten thousand steps or more, consider it part of their ten thousand steps. It just seems, you know, I, I'd agree with your opinion on the safety factor. If there's no traffic coming and people want to walk and take their chances and they can, but you know, to have a light that close, it just doesn't seem like it's worth all the effort for people to, if they need to use the light, you go to the light. I mean, this has come up in other places by the ice arena and other places where people, as you said, they walk out in front of cars, even if you're moving, you know, they, they do have the right of way, you're correct, but it also means if somebody's going thirty miles an hour, you don't step in front of them, you know, ten feet in front of their car. So I, I think I'd agree with you on this, you know, unless there's some other extreme reason why they need to have it mid-block.
I, I was going to ask, is, does this have anything to do with the helicopter pad there? Is there, has there been any talk of that they want it there be because of the helicopter pad or was that brought up?
Wasn't mentioned, Jeff.
I mean, Jeff, I would agree with you and Marie. I don't know that it's necessary. The only thing I worry about is will they be crossing that Allen Street anyways? And does this make that a little safer? But I, I, I know what you're saying, Marie. I think I could use a little more exercise myself, so I don't, I don't think it's a bad idea to walk to the corner.
Well, I mean, if you just look around, I think no matter what kind of traffic control devices you've got, there are people that are going to cross. I've seen people run across Foot Avenue, across four lanes without a light. And so you can't put them everywhere, but people do what they're going to do. And I guess we educate people if it's a safety factor and there's a problem. If there have been accidents there where people have been hurt, has there been any history at all of people getting hit or pedestrian vehicle accidents in that area?
In fact, Maria, Maria, it was on the other intersection where the other crosswalk was where a pedestrian got hurt bad.
Yeah, but it was, yeah, in the crosswalk though, wasn't it?
Correct.
Yeah, but that's what I said. So no matter, not, you know, it's unfortunate, but if people are distracted and they're not paying attention, you know, it, it's going to happen. It's on all of us, the drivers and the pedestrians.
Apparently the visitors parking lot is not even being utilized on the Foot Avenue side where that crosswalk is, because they're not allowing visitation. But you know, I, I can't believe that the more employees are not parking over there. I know a couple of them park there, but it's every day, it's almost completely empty. So that would solve a lot of their problems until they allow visitation after the pandemic, of course.
I believe they're set up for their employee parking is on the Allen Street side.
Right, but I'm just saying, you know, on the interim, why aren't they using that parking lot? It's pretty well empty and they have a legal crosswalk.
It may be, you know, it could be U P M C's policy that they have to park in a specific lot. That would be my guess that they can't just randomly, and I know they have used those spots for dialysis patients and people that have, you know, medical conditions that they want them close to the entrance, but.
I believe that's also a, where they park over there is the employee entrance. That's probably where they check in and where they go. They don't want to go in the front door because it's more.
Yeah. I was kind of, I was wondering, Chief, what is your thoughts on this?
I don't think a crosswalk should be put in there. I think they should go to the light, the intersection of Allen. I think it's more dangerous to put a crosswalk in, in the middle of a block instead of just going to the intersection, Allen Street.
Thank you.
Brent, I will just add your, your, having, unfortunately, having had patients in the hospital recently and throughout this pandemic, they don't allow, the front doors are not being used. Even if you are one person who can go in to see one, you have to go in through the emergency room and get your temperature taken. So I'm certain that the reason they have that employee controlled parking is the same with my employer. Everybody has to go through a screening to get in the building.
Well, I would have to agree with, with the chief and with Marie and Jeff. I think I would be hesitant to okay this right now at this time. I'm not sure if, if it's something that has to go through Public Works, Jeff, or if it's something that the entire council needs to vote on. Because it seems to me like it is a public safety issue too, not just Public Works.
However you want to handle it, Elliot, thoughts?
I'm going to defer the chief on this one.
I'm just talking about as far as approval or denial. Do we dining committee and that's it? Public Works Committee, Public Safety Committee?
Say.
If it's not being recommended to the council by any committee, I guess there really isn't a resolution to bring forward.
I would deny it by Public Works Committee then, so take a vote.
Public Works Committee, I, any other thoughts on this? Grant, Vicki?
I, I agree with you. I go with, you know, whatever the chief says, I, I, I'm behind that and, and Marie and, you know, and Jeff, so yeah. I, I don't think there's, it's, there's nobody to sponsor it, so when there's no committee to sponsor it, so.
Yeah, I would. I would say we'd have to deny it at this time. Grant, anything?
Oh, I mean, it seems to be the consensus that it's not a good idea. And as Kim pointed out, the crosswalk might really not be any safer, so.
Okay, that's it for Public Works then.
Is there any other information, anything else from the council tonight before I turn it over to the mayor? If not, Mayor, Laura is yours.
All right. Thank you, everyone. And Tom, what we'll do is we'll prepare a letter on behalf of the Public Safety Committee saying that it was discussed and, you know, recommended against. So we'll put that together as a draft for you to review.
Public Works, that's Public Works.
Public Works, excuse me, yep.
I'll put the letter out. I'll give you a copy to Tom.
Thanks, Jeff. I just have a few comments this evening and then I have a couple executive session items that I will get to. The first one, I'm going to go these, I'm going to go through these in order of kind of like the saddest to the happiest, so that we can end on a happy note. I feel like we kind of need it now at the end of the year. So the first one, I wanted to just give the council an update on some of the statistics we have for COVID within our city workforce. I do want to let everyone know we've experienced a spike across different departments of COVID. As of this morning, we did have several spikes that have now gotten over COVID and released back to work. But as of right now, across all departments, we have three employees that have confirmed COVID diagnosis and are being quarantined. And we have fourteen that are currently being quarantined and awaiting a test result. So just keep that in mind. I'm happy to provide you all a bit of a more in-depth one tomorrow morning as the rest of our departments look through, but we, it is hitting every department. COVID is in the, on the rise here in the city of Jamestown. And I cannot stress enough that we need to talk to our constituents about continuing to stay home, maintaining that social distance and wearing a mask. I will say mask compliance has been really good compared to some of the other cities, both in our county and across the Western New York region. So I've been very pleased with that, but COVID is definitely on the rise in Jamestown. And as of right now, it has almost more cases than Dunkirk and Fredonia. So we need to be cautious as we continue through the holidays. As part of that, our team is looking at potentially making next week appointment only for city offices. We've not yet made a decision on that, but given the rise of COVID cases that are not only impacting our employees and the holidays coming up, we're a little nervous about keeping all of the offices open and not necessarily by, by appointment only. So we are actually only in the office a couple of days next week, the time between Christmas and the New Year's. There's only a couple of open days. During that time, we are preparing tax bills and getting those out anyways. But I will let the council know as soon as we all make a decision, we're monitoring those COVID cases in the city carefully. And we're also monitoring our employees and the numbers that we have. So I want to make sure not only is the public safe when they come into a city office, but that our employees are also safe. So I just wanted to give the council a heads up on that. The, a couple of the things that I have going forward, our team is working on updating the management guidelines, taking a first crack at it. There's obviously some voting that will happen at the end of the month, which may impact the management guidelines, whether there's a decoupling of police and fire and other things, but we're doing general updates to update position, names and things like that. We'll be, we'll get those to council for review, most likely at the end of the month, and we'll have those for the January session. Well, there'll be enough time and we'll send it out to council for review to see if there's any revisions before we put it on a work session for additional review. So there'll be time to go through those and make any additional changes that you would all like as we update those guidelines. I, the third thing I have is that after the first of the year, we are scheduled to do a refresh of the city's website to make it more accessible, as well as to make it a little bit easier to navigate. Now, we are using Elizabeth Gleason and her web design team. And so any council member that is interested in being part of that website redesign or that accessibility, please let me know. Tomorrow I'll send her email along asking. We'd love to have you all a part of this as we go through and try to make the website, give it a refresh from its current design.
I would definitely like to be part of that if I can.
Awesome, wonderful.
Yes, Marie, thank you.
Okay. And.
I'm just, it's, it's kind of like the, the website, but is, I think we looked at it once before, but Kim helped me out. When someone goes to make a payment at the window, you can't use a card for a lot, you know, like I had a parking ticket and I tried to pay, you know, with the card and you can't pay it with the card. You have to, you know, they're like, well, you got to go online if you want to pay with the card and you know, and I had, you know, I don't have a, I didn't have my checkbook or anything, but is there anything that we can do? I mean, because I mean, everywhere in America, you know, you can go and use your, your credit card or debit card, something, you know, to make payments. Is there something in the future or I don't know, is it such a cost that we can't afford it? I don't know. And some, something like that, can we look at changing the, you know, changing that about the city, you know, when someone goes to make a payment? If you can't even make a payment, if you have a card, credit card?
Sure thing, Vicki. You actually stole my thunder for my next point. Just to, to address your issue in particular, so the credit, the parking tickets are actually done through a third-party vendor which has a separate credit card processing system. And as part of the system, I do not believe we're allowed to, and Jen will have to correct me, take that card at the window. But we can take, surely take a look into that and see if there's another way we might be able to accept that payment. Janet, I don't know if there's anything else you want to add on the, the parking tickets? Might be frozen.
She's frozen.
Well, if she comes back, we'll let her know, but yeah, she just, we just lost.
Yeah, we lost her. It was a great pose, great pose.
See, I can jump in on that a little bit if I could. You know, one of the things we had is when we discussed this with the processor of our parking fees earlier this year, one of the points that we had was the credit card fees would eat into a lot of the ticket costs right now. As it stands, usually a ticket's ten dollars and you would see the credit card processing fee take considerable some of that. I believe it was three dollars and twenty-five cents of that. So we had held off the time more because just the cost of it.
Thank you.
No problem, Vicki. So we will take a look into that because the next thing I wanted to announce to the council is that we will be able to, and because of COVID, we pushed very hard to work with our credit card processor to actually put all of our tax bills for twenty twenty-one online so that you may now pay with a credit card or an e-check so that you don't necessarily have to come into city hall in order to pay your tax bill this year. That will go live on January first. You can search your tax bill. If you have multiple tax bills you pay, you can search and add multiple tax bills to a cart and pay them all at once. There is a fee that is assessed if you use a credit card, which is about, I think it's two point six five percent. Maybe Jen can correct me. But if you pay by an e-check, if you're just using a check and typing in your bank information, it's only a dollar fifty fee. So it's about the cost of mailing in your check and putting a stamp on it. So we're really excited to be able to offer this. It's being offered to the city at no additional cost. It's actually built in with our credit card processing company that we already, we already pay just based on the fees that are, that are collected. So we're excited to offer that and we will be putting out information to the public on how to pay their bill online. We'll be doing some videos, we'll be doing some press release. And we hopefully will be able to then add in, once this, once we get through tax bills, additional fees to pay online, such as if you wanted to renew your dog license or get a birth or death certificate and things like that. So we are working with other software to make that happen. Exactly what we've been talking about, Vicki, in the council since the beginning of this year. Okay. Any other questions? We're putting together all the information. We'll send it out to the council members on how taxes can be paid online so that you can distribute that to your constituents. The last thing I have, and then I just have two items for executive session, is I just wanted to thank all of the members of council as well as the department heads for the fact that we've made it through twenty twenty. You have one more meeting to go and it's been a incredibly challenging and difficult year in many respects. And I know many of you fielded phone call after phone call during this pandemic. Things changed left and right. And sometimes you had to spin your head like The Exorcist many times. But you know, I wanted to just say thank you to each and every one of you as we go into the holiday season. We've got, we got through the majority of the pandemic. We've been able to keep our health and we've been able to keep most of our residents safe and healthy as well as get them information in a very timely manner. So I just wanted to thank each and every one of you for the work that you've done this year. I know it's been easy. I know it's not been a normal year in any way, stretch of the imagination. But I wanted to thank you and I just want to wish each and every one of you and your families a healthy and a safe holiday. Other than that, I have two items for executive session, one under current litigation and one matter affecting the value of real property for the purchase or sale. and one matter affecting the value of real property for the purchase or sale. Yes.
Do I have a motion to go into?
Don't move.
Second by Marie.
Second by Councilwoman Kruba, all in favor? Okay, and we'll wait till you turn off the recording, and again, we wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and we'll see you next week between Christmas and New Year's. Thanks for.
A little extra boost. Just to let folks know, Tony, there is no action or vote to be taken on these items, and if I could, please have Elliot, Ryan, Jeff, and I don't know if Pat's still on, continue to join us, and we will also have Terry O'Neil be joining us as well.